How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good, good, good. Excellent. It's good to have volleyball team here and everybody else. So we are going to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Absolutely. I'm Rusty, Councilwoman Baldino.
Here.
Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Purstak, here. Mayor Potem, Pimentel.
Here.
Mayor Boyle.
Here.
Gang's all here.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna have the invocation led by Rabbi David Lisbon of the Jewish Community Center, followed by Councilmember Baldino. You're gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could all please rise.
Good evening, honorable mayor, mayors of the city council, town officials, and good evening to all. May God Almighty bestow upon the leaders of this great town the wisdom and understanding to continue in the path of justice and goodness. Bless these individuals elected by the people in whom faith and confidence have been placed to legitimate, to legislate laws, making decisions that will affect the lives of the citizens. Let them recognize that this is not only a great honor and civic responsibility, but a holy endeavor as well. Next week is Rosh Hashanah. We celebrate by eating apples and honey, symbolic of a sweet new year, attending services. And with the blowing of the chauffeur, we'll have one at the library park, symbolic of a simple cry from the depths of one's heart, searching for connection and meaning. Rosh Hashanah marks the anniversary of the sixth day of creation, the day Adam and Eve were created. Adam, the first human being, opened his eyes to a world that appeared to have always been. He lifted his eyes to the vast sky above. He gazed about the bustling life. He beheld mighty mountains, majestic waterfalls, flowing rivers and forests. He cried out, "This is not just the sky. This is the vast glory of my maker. This is not my, this is not a mountain or a waterfall, a tiger or an ant. This is all the majesty of an infinite being who created a world that of kindness and might, beauty and wonder, glory and majesty, so that his creatures might know him. I know what this is. This is not a jungle. This is the garden of a great and magnificent king. That is why Rosh Hashanah is called the first day of creation, for only then did the world know it, for it to have meaning. And on each Rosh Hashanah, we replay that scene. We discover meaning in our world, and the world is born again. I would like to conclude with a special prayer that was said by the high priest in the temple in Yom Kippur a week later after Rosh Hashanah, a prayer for universal peace. May it be your will, Lord our God and God of our fathers, that this coming year shall be for us and for all people, wherever they are, a year of light, blessing, rejoicing, glory, good assembly, song, delight, goodness, deliverance, sustenance, leaning, learning, rest, comfort, joy, redemption, jubilation, a year to hold our heads high with peace and plenty. Oh, se shalom bim romav, hu yah se shalom alenu, v'ya kol yisrael, viyim ru, amen. He who makes peace on high, may he bring peace upon us and upon all humanity. Let us all say together, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with unity and justice as our own.
That just got dropped off. That's the first one. Do that to the man. Or you can read it. All right, first up, we have, thank you, by the way, thank you Rabbi, and thank you Councilmember Baldino. We have a special presentation. We've got the Young Entrepreneurs of El Segundo Accommodation, and Councilmember Purstak's gonna read it. Thank you.
Yeah, so whereas the mission at Young Entrepreneurs of El Segundo is to empower and encourage kids under the age of eighteen who live or go to school in El Segundo to pursue their goals of entrepreneurship, and whereas Young Entrepreneurs of El Segundo offers an outlet for kids to showcase a talent or service. They provide the community opportunities often in the form of a pop-up fair where the community and young entrepreneurs can come together at special events. And whereas on July 1st, 2023, the Young Entrepreneurs of El Segundo held a Markers, a Maker Square event with thirty-eight individual booths and over fifty kid vendors who designed, developed, and sold their wear. And whereas students showcased their showcasing, showcased their showcasing their talents and passions by making something or offering their services to the community. Items such as tie-dye shirts, jewelry, baked goods, lemonade, Indian food, crocheted animals, pot holders, Indian food, again, slime, three D creator creations, art, photography, and so much more. It was very impressive to see the kids come alive and become entrepreneurs. Now therefore, on this fifth day of September 2023, the mayor and members of the City Council of El Segundo, California hereby commend founder Shauna Lopez-Bartha on her commitment to creating a path for kids to showcase their talent and further, and further commend the young American, young entrepreneurs of El Segundo, and wish them many, many more successful events. And it was a wonderful event. I'm not sure how many of the community I know I attended, and there was quite a lot of people. I bought lots of cookies and how to make cookies and poems, and it was a wonderful event. So thank you, everybody, for putting that together. And is Shauna here? Yes, she is. We're gonna bring you up and take a photo.
No, I didn't prepare anything, but I just wanted to say I'm very honored for this award. I was very proud of this event. And all of the kids, in total, there was actually about eighty kids who participated in this. And it was an amazing day that we all came together for them, and I can't wait for future ones to happen. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, we got everybody. I see everybody. Okay, oh, great. Here we go, guys. Can I get a couple more? A couple more. Thank you so much.
All right, next up, we have hopefully the entire volleyball team, the El Segundo Eagles Boys Volleyball Team, winning their third CIF titles, first SoCal Regional State title, eighth league championship title, and twenty-three game winning streak during the title run. Congratulations, boys. We're super proud of you. We're gonna have you all up here in a second. But let's give them a round of applause. Bittersweet, too, because I know we lost a former player who was close to many of you and to many of us. And I'm gonna read the players on the team. James Anderson. Where we at, James? All right, James. Jeff Van Tel. What's that? Jets, sorry. Yeah, I can't read very well. Giorgio Biondo. All right. Jackson Brenneman. Nathan Burns. Max Comer. Ethan, Ethan D? D? Day? Not here. Is it D or Day? Dia. Neither. Thank you. All right, Daniel Escobar. Nolan Kelly. College. Con, what's that? Oh dang, that's where I heard about that one. Connor Logan. Nice. Kalish McCarthy. All right, I'm, I can't, I can never tell you guys apart, although I should by now. I've seen you so many times. Ryan Pilfist. Ah, nice. Dylan Pilfist. Ethan Walker. All right, and then Con Wellman. Nice to see you again. All right, team manager Summer Brenneman. All right. Okay. Is Shev here? Athletic Director Steve Shavelin? Nope, not here. Okay, Principal Steve Gebhardt. Not here right now. Head Coach Tim Hovland, former ABB champ. Assistant Coach Luke Dolivo. Assistant Coach Will Loops. Not here. Yeah, I didn't think, think I saw Loops here. All right, we're gonna have you all up, guys, and do a photo if you're okay with that. You good with that? Awesome. Let's get you up here.
Mr. Mayor, before we do, let me just say quickly, I was so fortunate to see you guys make this run. And what I appreciated more than just the volleyball was the way you came together as a team. Like, there would be mistakes, there would be setbacks. You guys would like brush it off, you huddled up, you go right back out to work. And it was really exceptional. I'm so proud of everything you've done, and thank you, guys, for being here.
Oh, now we open a door.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for everything. But you know what? We won that state, and as you said, the, the game, we should have probably lost. They're a better team than us. True or not? I mean, they warmed up, and I went, we, we got problems here. So I said to Shev, I said, "I just hope nobody gets hurt." All of a sudden, these guys come together, and our whole year was said, "We believe." That's what's on our ring, and they believed, and we came through and played great. These guys are studs. Thank you very much.
Coach, thanks for the words. Let's get you guys up here for a photo.
Are we holding these in the photo?
Yeah.
This is, that's for coaches.
I'm doing vibes.
Yeah.
Who is this?
Yeah.
Oh, this is Summer.
Jackson. Ms. Jackson.
Honor.
Nathan Burns.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ethan D is not.
Never.
Yeah, of course.
Coaches, principal.
Coach, that's you right there.
What's your name? Tell them I just said. You're in here.
Uh-oh. They're too tall. They're too tall. I'm sorry. Uh, yeah. Could I actually get the council members, could I actually get the council members on the back row here? And then the boys down? Okay, let's see what we got here. Okay, that's actually working. That is actually working. All right, here we go. Yes, very good mayor. You know, you're a pro. Here we go, guys. And a couple of shots, a couple more, and a couple more for fun. All right. Wait, any parents? Yeah.
Not Dylan is taller than that. Thank you, guys. All right, here we go.
Really?
I don't know, dude.
Yeah? Give him hair, Phil.
Here's Ethan.
Luke, I can give out, are you gonna be at the school tomorrow? I can give out the, the.
Uh, Coach said you guys are gonna stay through the end. Good news, we out of here by eight twenty-five roughly tonight, so stay tuned. Just hang in there, guys. Uh, you can leave at any time, actually. I'm just kidding. All right, public communications, now is the time and place. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that wishes to speak to us tonight?
I do not.
Anyone in the audience going once, going twice? Any volleyball players wanna express your sentiment?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Yeah, great job, guys. Thanks for coming in. Gil Gondo. We'll see you guys at the parade for Little Ears, hopefully.
And homecoming, coming up.
Oh, sweet, yeah, homecoming. Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Later, bye. Okay, Mr. City Manager, you have some items to report?
I guess they didn't wanna hear about the Hyperion update. Um, thank you, Mayor and Council. As I do every council meeting, I give a brief update on the status of Hyperion, what we've done over the last few weeks or since the last council meeting. Happy to announce tonight that the South Coast AQMD has submitted an official letter of support for our bill, AB 1216. It's, it's been huge. I, I thank our ad hoc committee and staff for all their, their work on this, working with AQMD, back and forth, many, many rounds of discussion with them, but they have submitted a letter of support. And this is very important because it lets those voting on the bill know that the regulatory entity, which is AQMD, is in favor of the bill. Uh, so speaking of the bill, on August 24th, AB 1216 passed the Senate Appropriations Committee. So it's another hurdle. Uh, the bill now will go to the Senate floor, where we just found out today that Senator Ben Allen will serve as the floor manager for our bill. So that, that's another excellent word that we got today. Um, the date of the Senate floor vote has yet to be determined, but we do anticipate it will happen before the legislative session closes on the fourteenth of September. So it's like right around the corner. So assuming it happens before then, um, the bill would be just a few steps away from the governor's signature. So keeping our fingers crossed that we're gonna get, we'll get this done certainly by the end of the year, or by, by the end of the month, or the end of the fall, I would say. Had a great meeting with Mayor, Councilmember Baldino, myself, Elias, Environmental Committee Chair and, and ad hoc Representative Tracy Miller-Zarnicky, with all of the elected officials on a Zoom call, including representatives from Senator Allen's office, Congressman Lou's office, Assembly Member Marisucci's office, Supervisor Holly Mitchell. And we even had someone from the city of LA representing Mayor Bass's office. Ryan Jackson, yeah, Ryan Jackson, uh, he was on the hot seat, let's put it that way, but he, he, he took it very well. We all had questions regarding LA's participation in this, and we established some deliverables at the end of the meeting that we're following up on. And in fact, he did reach out, I know, to, to Councilmember Baldino today, in fact, or yesterday, on some follow-up things that he did say he would provide with us, to us. As for AQMD, in the last two weeks, they received approximately seventy complaints relating to odors from Hyperion. But there were not a sufficient number of complaints on any one day to establish a public nuisance. They currently opened an investigation into the fence line monitoring alerts that occurred on August fifteenth and sixteenth. So they're still monitoring, obviously, everything that's going on there, whether they're complaints or fence line monitoring alerts that they get, and we keep in constant contact with them. Also, wanted to just share a little bit, I, I know at the last meeting I talked about how Hyperion was making improvements to their tank covers and their odor scrubbers, which are really the key items that, that help deal with the, the, the effects of odors. And right now, there are twenty-seven primary treatment tanks in, in total. Each tank includes a cover, obviously, to minimize the odor emissions, and they've taken measurements, fabrication, installation. Of the new primary tank covers, they call them battery tanks, A, B, and C, are currently underway, and hopefully will be finished. They let us know they'll be finished by the end of this year. Now, there's another primary tank cover called Battery Tank D. That's anticipated to be finished by June of 2024. So they are working on, on those covers and all of the scrubbers associated with them. And, and as for the scrubbers, as I said, they'll be rehabilitated by the end of this month. So a lot of good things happening. Again, thank you to the ad hoc committee and to the council and the staff, and really AQMD, too, has been a great support throughout the process. Um, I do have another item, if you wouldn't mind. I'd like to have our police chief, Jaime Bermudez, come up. I, I know a number of emails went back and forth on a couple incidents the last week, and I asked him to come up and just brief the council on issues surrounding those, those items.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I wanted to talk briefly about zero bail and some of the issues we've been, we've been having. Over the weekend, we had, um, we had an incident where three suspects, two juveniles, one adult, ended up committing several burglaries, including auto thefts here in the city, a total of three incidents. We got a call from a resident, and ultimately, our officers ended up catching all three suspects. And this was after a, a brief pursuit, a perimeter, where we had to call in additional resources. And our officers did a great job, but I did wanna highlight some things that I, that are important for the council, number one, to, to consider, and then also to inform our residents of something that's coming October first. So on the morning of Labor Day, we had three suspects. They committed a grand theft auto and then also a burglary, a vehicle burglary. And during those crimes, we got a call, which ultimately led to a pursuit of that stolen vehicle. The pursuit ended up terminating on the north side of the city. Our officers set up a perimeter, and ultimately, two juveniles were arrested and one eighteen-year-old. And the reason I bring this up is during my discussions with the city manager, I told him about zero bail. And that's ultimately what happened. All three of these suspects, despite committing numerous crimes in our city, and we've found out since that they've committed other crimes in surrounding cities, and also being on probation, the juveniles, um, all three of them were cited and released. And that is per, um, on the adult, per zero bail, and on the juveniles, we called Juvenile Hall, which is Los Pedrinos in Downey, and we explained the circumstances of the incident, and they said, "Sign them out. We don't want them." And so, uh, very unfortunate, but it's something that we continue to see, and we will continue to see as October first comes around, when zero bail becomes permanent. I know that in June, I had, I did a presentation for council, talking about some of the challenges that the police department had. Among those challenges was temporary zero bail protocols that the county had in effect at that time. At the time, we did not know that they were gonna be permanent. Since then, I've attended several meetings, including one, uh, two months ago at LA County Court in downtown LA with other LA County Chiefs. And, um, we were informed that zero bail was becoming permanent October first. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about really zero bail, because people, they read about it in the LA Times, they read about zero bail, and they, they somewhat understand it, but in essence, zero bail is gonna dictate how we treat all of nonviolent felonies, as defined by the courts, and most misdemeanors. So unless people commit a certain amount of crimes, everyone, everyone, especially here in El Segundo, the crimes that we mainly deal with, like theft, auto theft, um, grand theft, petty theft, everyone will get a ticket, and they will be out in the streets to commit other crimes. And there is no limit to the amount that people get, the criminals get to enjoy zero bail. They can get it over and over. So they can go out, commit a crime, they get out with a ticket, zero bail. They can go out and commit another crime, and it's zero bail, and that can be over and over. So this is something that, um, is significant for us, and I, I have two examples. So other than the one that I just talked about, we had another one. August twenty-sixth, on Saturday morning, at nearly seven o'clock in the morning, we had a commercial burglary at Raytheon on the east side of our city. Again, our officers went out there, they set up a perimeter, and we had to call in mutual aid. Uh, we ended up catching the suspect, nineteen-year-old out of this, out of a neighboring city. We ended up booking him for burglary, and during booking, we found out that he had been released just a couple hours earlier by a neighboring city for auto theft on zero bail. And so, um, what, what I'm trying to do at the police department is we're trying to keep track of all the zero bail cases. But, um, this is something that really people need to be intimately aware that's, that's happening. And the unfortunate part is, uh, a lot of people call the police department with their frustrations, but it's not, you know, I, I hate to point the finger at the courts, but it's not the police department. It's, it's a county-wide protocol that we need, that we must follow. And, um, I wanna assure the, the city council and the residents that we at, at the PD remain committed to public safety, law and order in our city. However, these are things that we need to follow through the courts.
Jesus, so this is, if I'm not mistaken, this is the LA County Board of Supervisors who approved this, right?
No, this is the LA County Superior Court.
Superior Court. So do we remember, or what was the rationale for the initial policy? Because the initial policy came into play during COVID. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
And what was the rationale at the time that they gave for that?
At the, at the time, going back, uh, back in 2020, I believe, the rationale was zero bail to, to protect basic, basically people that were in jail from getting COVID.
Right. So the idea initially was to protect people from getting COVID. And now they're making it a permanent policy, not to protect anybody at all. They're just making it a permanent policy for no apparent reason whatsoever. They're just making it a permanent policy for no apparent reason whatsoever.
Well, we got in the meeting, so a couple things. One, initially, this went to the voters a couple years ago. Voters rejected.
Voters rejected it, right?
Yes, and then there are some people that, at the county government and at the state government, that support zero bail. And so zero bail came about from COVID. Once that went away, the ACLU, I believe there's a court case, and the courts agreed with the ACLU that bail was unconstitutional. So then that became, that applied to LAPD and LA County sheriffs. In essence, it applied to the whole county because it went through the courts. And so now, the courts have picked that up and said it's unconstitutional to demand bail from people that have been in jail. And so now, the LA County Superior Court has said that it is unconstitutional.
So it's only unconstitutional in Los Angeles, but the rest of the country, it's constitutional? Is that kind of what we're hearing right now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so the idiocy of this is mind-boggling. And there's zero repercussions for anything that happens anymore. And we can expect an uptick in crime regardless of the situation, but mainly because there is literally nothing to deter anyone from doing anything wrong. Nothing is going to happen unless someone is injured during the commission of the crime. So if it becomes a violent felony, okay, then maybe we'll do something about it. But other than that, our businesses, our homes, our cars can be burglarized on multiple occasions, but that's okay, because they'll be released to do it again, all because of the Superior Court.
Yes.
I'm just, I can't believe the words that are coming out of my mouth, but is that fairly accurate?
Yes, as unfortunate as that sounds. In essence, we've had people that have not been voted into office making policies about zero bail.
And we, as a people, voted this down two years ago? I think, I remember, it was a ballot matter from my, I do remember this coming up. I think it's been voted down, if I'm not mistaken. So now it doesn't matter if we vote it down, it can be unilaterally imposed.
Chief, if I can ask, isn't there a risk management matrix or algorithm that the magistrate or the judge is supposed to be using when we bring someone in? And it could be that we disagree with how that matrix is set about what qualifies as a risk. If that's the case, we have, that's a policy decision, right, that we can politically lever. But that matrix exists, it's not a blanket zero bail unless the following two things are done. Is that accurate or am I totally wrong on this?
Well, there's three, there's three parts to this zero bail. And I'll try to explain it briefly. There's, depending on the crime, it's what's referred to as cite and release, CR. Then others are BR, book and release. And then the third is a magistrate review. So what you're referring to is a magistrate review, and that, certain crimes fall under that category. Magistrate review doesn't necessarily mean that the person will be held into custody. What it means is the magistrate will review the likelihood of that person coming back to court. And the responsibility of a magistrate review is to impose the least, the least burden on that suspect to be able to get out of jail. And so, and they can't beat financial conditions. So the magistrate gets a report. We asked the question, several of us chiefs asked the question about what is going to be included in this report? We didn't get a straight answer. So there's going to be some AI aspect to it that's going to generate a report on the suspect. And then the magistrate will be able to review it and determine the likelihood of this person coming back to court. Conditions imposed by the magistrate might include, for example, texting that suspect, mandating that the person visit a court employee to make sure that he's reminded of when his court date is. But ultimately, that person will be out in the street. He may just, he or she may get more conditions than simply a ticket.
Can I ask, and this is, I know this is not an agendized item, but perhaps in the future, we get some sort of policy input on this about, I mean, these are not federal judges who are appointed for life. Nor do I necessarily know the process, but it would be nice if we had some guidance as to what our city's recourse could be, either through voters at the ballot box when we elect judges, or if there's some direction that we can be given to our, to either our colleagues in sister cities or through any of our other policy bodies.
So one other thing too, that I want people to know is September, because this goes into effect October 1st, September 13th, I will be putting out a press release, as well as several other chiefs in the county, explaining zero bail and some of the challenges with that, just to make sure that people understand exactly what zero bail means. And there are two examples in there that I think are really important for me to highlight today. For example, under the old bail schedule, if someone was arrested of false imprisonment, under the new protocol, that person would be booked and released. There would be, they wouldn't stay in jail. They would just get booked into jail and then they'd get released. Under the previous bail schedule, that suspect would be, would have to post $50,000 bail. And granted, false imprisonment isn't a normal crime here in El Segundo. However, the other example is auto theft, for example. That is now a book and release. So anyone that we stop for auto theft, it's a nonviolent felony. So they would come in, we would book them, take their picture, take their fingerprint, and they would be released. Under the previous bail schedule, they had a $35,000 bail. And so almost all thefts will be cite and release. So significant, significant impact for law enforcement in El Segundo and all the beach cities.
So in that press release that you're gonna do on the 13th, could you include where people could lodge complaints against? So that we make sure that they know that they can either address a certain judge or the judicial branch or somehow, but we just need to let people know where they can lodge those complaints? Because I, to your point, we're kind of, our hands are tied here. So how do we ensure that that message is going to the right people?
Yeah, we can definitely add that to our release.
I would only, the last thing before I promise I'll stop talking, is we have notably, in our last two legislative platforms, declined to take a position as a city on cash bail as a philosophical point. But I think there's, so there's a difference in the wording of this likely will, will show that there's a difference between the philosophy of cash bail versus the process as it's currently being implemented. So the process seems to be clearly not working. The philosophy about the virtues of pretrial confinement are sort of a different, a nuance that's important, probably for conveying our message effectively.
Yeah, exactly. So I think when people hear zero bail and noncash bail, I think, and when people hear nonviolent felonies, that sort of thing. I mean, I think some people are inclined to, hey, you know what, that's something I can get behind. But then we've done several, several meetings in our community. One of them, just last month, I did it with the, all the security directors here in our city that we invited. And I asked, I actually brought in people from our department so they can see how this zero bail works at, in detectives, in patrol, and also by our court officer, so that they see operationally how it impacts the community and not just on paper.
Thank you, Chief. Please keep note of these statistics as you have been doing, so that we have some data we can take to our legislative officials in the state to try to fix this.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Daryl?
Yes, just one other thing, Mayor, before I close out my comments. I may have failed to include Councilmember Persnick as a Hyperion Ad Hoc committee member. So if I did, I apologize. Just wanted to double, make sure on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're on to Item A, procedural motions. Read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Would someone like to move approval?
So moved.
Thank you.
Persnick second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you. Consent, any polls?
Seven, please.
Okay. Do we, do we have a motion to approve Items 3 through 6?
So moved.
Baldino will second. Drew moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Okay, Item 6. Item 7, this is purchase of three replacement police vehicles. I just had a question, because of the long weekend, we didn't have an opportunity to review these. And I know that we are adding a fourth police beat and conceivably adding up to eight officers. Are we sure we want to dispose of our three vehicles or are they completely in op?
I believe these three probably are not the ones we want to keep. These are the K-9 vehicles that we're replacing. So I'll talk to staff, but I think one we keep is kind of like the car that we park in front of locations that's still operable, that maybe is not drivable, but it still can work as a decoy car.
My follow-on to that would be if our assessing through lateral officers takes hold and we end up with 72 officers, are we going to need to purchase three new, three more vehicles?
At this point, I don't think we do. I don't think we have to do that right now.
Okay, because we just bought three more last year, or 18 months ago, I think was the last time we put them through.
No, we bought our entire fleet last year.
Our entire fleet?
Yes, so these are vehicles that we, these are vehicles that we did not replace last time because we wanted to extend their life. These are the K-9 vehicles and they're equipped a little bit differently than our normal patrol cars, but.
And the one sergeant vehicle that's a year, a year out.
Yeah, and the reason we're asking for that one is because just based on the lag time that we have on ordering these vehicles, it's probably not gonna be in operation until next year, but we want to get in line to purchase it.
So these will all be purchased in this fiscal year or the next fiscal year? Two this year and one next year?
Well, one, two this year. I believe one, we want to get the order in so that we can get it in time. But we also have to buy the equipment and everything else that goes with the car.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to move approval, Mayor Proton? You don't have to, we can have someone else move approval.
I'll move approval. On this item, on Item 7.
Persnick second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you. We're on to staff presentations. We've got Item 8, S&amp;P Global Ratings Increase of El Segundo's Long-Term Credit Rating to AAA from AA+. Huge news in the capital markets. Who's gonna?
Yes, Mayor, our Interim Finance Director, David Kane, will make the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Staff is pleased to inform City Council as well as the community that on August 8th of this year, Standard and Poor's global raised El Segundo's long-term credit rating to AAA from AA+. And El Segundo joins 50 other cities in the state of California that have that AAA rating. So there are now 51 cities in California. One of the questions I get asked a lot of times is what does that credit rating mean? And how does it compare to us as private individuals? For us as private individuals, we have what we call a FICO score. It can go up to 850 points. Based on that score, determines what we pay when we go out and borrow money. This scoring mechanism is also used by lenders to help make accurate, reliable, and fast credit risk determinations. And help to answer the question, hey, is this individual going to pay that obligation back? The difference with evaluating cities and S&amp;P is they look at more than just the financial numbers. Ratings aren't based on the size of our city or our location. They are based on a variety of factors. And so before I jump into what some of those factors are that S&amp;P looked at in this particular case, kind of wanted to give a little bit of a background. Back in May of 2021, City Council and staff moved forward with putting together pension obligation bonds. And in that process, we were given a credit rating of the AA+. S&amp;P, at that particular point in time, indicated to us that one of the things that they were willing to do in relation to that credit rating is in the future to reevaluate the city's own credit rating. So they indicated that if we could demonstrate that we've enhanced our revenue performance, we've put policies in place that will lead us to a path of greater sustainability, it would be something that they would be willing to evaluate. So with that in mind, City staff and the former CFO, Joe Liliano, worked hard over the last couple of years to meet and exceed those criteria that had been laid out by S&amp;P in order to receive that AAA rating. So I would like to thank City staff for all their hard work in putting that together. And then also for this City Council in supporting and making that rating possible. So what are some of the areas that S&amp;P looks at when they evaluate? One of them is, do we have formal adopted financial policies that we're adhering to and will enhance stronger financial security? And this body has been very proactive in making those happen, such as debt management policy. A more recent one that was adopted was the unfunded actuarial liability, Topgolf revenue allocation with that private partnership that came into play, as well as our strategic plan. S&amp;P looks at, do we have a strategic plan and are we adhering to it? What are our priorities and our goals? They also look at, are we doing best practices, including regular financial reporting, long-term budget planning and forecasting, annual adoption of a long-term five-year CIP plan, as well as the use, which we do here in the city of El Segundo, utilizing external tax revenue consultants such as HDL Avenue to help us with our projections on sales tax, property tax, TOT, utility user tax. The other important thing that they look at and stress very heavily is our reserve levels and our reserve policies that we have in place. And so this body, in June, when they adopted the budget for 2324, also increased the reserve policy level from 20 to 25%. Added a 5% CIP reserve. And that is in addition to the economic uncertainty reserve of $2 million that we have in place. So they looked at and evaluated, hey, you're moving in a positive direction. Some of the other things that S&amp;P noted in their credit rating letter, and it was an item that we showed them to demonstrate what we were looking at in terms of a long-range financial plan, is that that graph actually showed that the city is gonna have to make some further changes to avoid projected decreases in reserves. And that in future years, there is expenditures over revenue. And we need to look at and begin to evaluate those. This organization has already started to look at some of those. We're updating some of those options. And then we're also updating the 10-year plan that will allow us to, in that financial model, put in detailed revenue and expenditure assumptions that will allow us to look at numbers realistically, look at best-case, worst-case scenarios, as well as allowing us to make really informed decisions based on various activities that are going on. S&amp;P also noted that El Segundo's position as a key employment and entertainment hub within a diverse city and Los Angeles County allowed us to continue to maintain some healthy economic growth here in the city of El Segundo. They recognize the advantage of having the Topgolf private investment that provides this community with over 500 jobs, as well as several million dollars in ongoing revenue to our community here. There is, city residential market remains active with projects that are going on. And then S&amp;P also noted the fact that the voters recently approved Measure BT, which amends the city ordinance that governs the city's business tax and will continue to bring ongoing revenue that will provide. and will continue to bring ongoing revenue that will provide revenue sources for essential city services and programs. Some of the key metrics that S and P utilized in their credit report, identifying El Segundo as very strong economically, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, very strong management. And this is weak debt and long-term liabilities, which is a good thing, and strong institutional framework. So we're pleased to have that triple A rating. So it is our recommendation that City Council receive and refile, receive and file Standard and Poor's Rating Report dated August eighth, two thousand twenty-three. That concludes my report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, sir. Great news. Any questions?
Oh, thank you, and thank you to the staff for all that hard work. It really paid off.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, item nine, resolution to waive fees associated with World Series championship parade and team recognition ceremony for the El Segundo Little League. This is Man City.
Thank you, Ally.
Well, let me, let me disclose, I had a meeting with the city manager, Ally, and Jaime today to talk about the parade, in case it's relevant.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good evening, honorable mayors and members of the city council. This has been a very exciting few weeks for El Segundo. As everyone now knows, the El Segundo Little League's twelve U All-Star Team traveled to Williamsport, Pennsylvania, where they played in the Little League World Series. After a number of exciting games against national and international teams, our kids brought home the World Series championship. To honor and recognize these young athletes, the city is planning a parade and player ceremony in partnership with the El Segundo Little League to be held on Sunday, September tenth, at twelve PM and one PM respectively. This epic, epic win by twelve young men and their dedicated coaches has resulted in a wave of support from around the world, with local and national news outlets clamoring to capture these once-in-a-lifetime moments. This has been a time of great pride, not only for the Little League, but for the city of El Segundo and all of our residents who have been a part of this journey. Staff are requesting a budget appropriation of, of up to eighty thousand dollars to cover all personnel, supplies, services, and equipment related to the players, to the player ceremony and parade. Staff are soliciting sponsorships to help offset these costs, but that amount is yet to be determined as sponsorships are still being negotiated. That concludes my, my report. I'd be happy, happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Can you just give an update on the logistics of the parade? Because I know it's kind of changed a little bit.
Yes.
As far as the length of it and all that.
Sure, so I'll just give a, a brief overview. So the parade will start at twelve PM on Imperial and Main Street. It will travel all the way down Main Street and end at El Segundo Boulevard. The players will then be routed directly to Stevenson Field, where we'll have a player ceremony starting at approximately one PM. City staff are distributing wristbands similar to how we distribute them for the Fourth of July. So every resident with a rec ID card will receive two wristbands for free. They can purchase two additional wristbands for five dollars apiece. The Little League is putting together the actual program, if you will, for the ceremony, what they'll say and what they'll do with the kids on stage. But the city personnel have been meeting for the last week or so to coordinate logistics as far as street closures and staffing and security and all of those aspects of the event. But I'd be happy to answer any questions specifically that the council might have.
So just for clarification for the parade, are we also including the high school band and the high school cheerleaders?
From the last planning, we had a planning meeting last Thursday, I believe it was. So there were city personnel, I think, from each department, members of the Little League Board and some parents as well. That discussion did take place. However, I think there was some concern about security as far as components within the actual parade. And so we discussed having the El Segundo, I believe it was the high school band and the cheerleaders over at Stevenson, welcoming the kids as they came over to enter the field. That was the last discussion we had about that.
Is that a final decision or can we? I mean, because a parade without a band seems.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to defer, if I could, to my colleague, Chief Bermuda, so he could speak to some of those decisions.
Because I just don't understand, we have bands and cheerleaders down Main Street in our holiday parade every year. And so I just would be, it would just seem kind of odd not to have them in the parade.
Hi, good evening. As Director was saying, so last week, we had a couple of meetings with several departments, including the PD. And Lieutenant Corkins, who plans most of our special events, was there. One of the concerns was, and this is addressing whether it's final, right? So one of the concerns that he brought up was during the homecoming with all the kids, a lot of people approached the kids. And the feedback that he got was the parents were very cautious about allowing people to approach the participants in the parade. And so when everyone was talking in this meeting, the concern was brought up. And the agreement amongst the people in that meeting was that we would not have people walking in the parade. So we would have motor officers and motor and officers protecting the parade members on the sides. And so when that information made it to me, I, I thought that the agreement was made within that meeting, all the, all the people that were in there, including Little League and PD, Public Works, and Parks and Rec. And, you know, we've gone back and forth. I know initially, the parade was going to go to Grand. And so information came back that through the chamber, that we really wanted it to go to El Segundo. So we opened it up to El Segundo. It created two additional blocks that we had to provide coverage for. So we've got a significant amount of mutual aid resources coming in. And so like I said, if, if the, we want to make the parade special for all the participants. And so I, I don't want the community to feel like we're overpolicing this parade and we're in any way raining on the parade, right? So the agreement was in, in those safety meetings, everyone agreed to that. And so that's why we went with that. I, I trust Lieutenant Corkins' judgment, and that's what his feedback was as far as, you know, maintaining the safety of all the participants. If people started rushing from the crowd, it would be very difficult to start protect, protecting, you know, like a group, like the cheer group or a band. And so that, that was the logic behind having that.
May I just ask, so this is Little League's parade, correct? They, they requested this, this is their event in a way, right? We're, I understand, it's not a city event, it's a Little League event, am I right?
It is actually a city event. Where city's paying for it, city's liability, it's, it's a city event.
Okay, but without the kids winning it, it's not happening. So my question basically is, out of what they requested, is there anything they're not getting? Because all I honestly, all I care about right now is if, is what was their request versus what we're able to achieve? Is there any difference?
I think we've made a compromise that I think the Little League is comfortable with.
And they're okay with the compromise? Because there's nobody here from there, so I'd ask them directly, but I just, I'm trying to.
What I heard from, I've been working with Ashley Becker, who's, I believe, their PR person. And her response to me was, we will follow whatever the PD recommends. We would love to be able to have these additional components in the parade, but they don't want to, you know, they don't want to go against the, the recommended, you know, from PD, what PD is recommending as far as safety. Their most important issue is their kids' safety. They've made that very clear. And I think Corkin's concern was safety and the amount of people. And so I think it's something they would like, but I think they also understand if PD feels it's safer to keep it smaller than their, from what I understand from my conversation, they're okay with that.
So the concern, I know, because we were all at the, the homecoming, if you would. And, and that got a little, that, that was way more attended, I think, than any of us expected it would be. And I guess to Councilman Prost's point, I, I understand that if people are looking to, to rush and touch, it's the kind of players, the band and the cheerleaders. I don't see why that is in, like, if you're having the police go up alongside the cars that the kids are in, I completely get that. But I, I guess I'm a little fuzzy on why that initial entry of, of a band and the cheerleaders is that, that much of a problem. Where the issue I know lies with the kids themselves and, and what the parents want. So if there's no way to compromise, and I guess the compromise is have it at the field on Stevenson? So that, that's kind of what, what we compromise out to?
That's what we discussed in the meeting.
Yeah, I wasn't at the meeting, so. Yeah, I guess if, if you're asking about there's no compromise, I've talked to Lieutenant Corkins. If, if the direction is to, we can make it hap, we can make it happen. It's, I, I guess the, the issue is that we were trying to make everything happen in that meeting. And so if, if the direction is that some things need to be in there, I can go back and I can talk to Lieutenant Corkins and say, hey, these things are essential to that parade. However, you know, I don't, I don't want to wait too short. That's why we had those meetings, because everyone was there to voice what was essential and what was critical to that parade.
I understand. I just say, this is a, like, quite literally a once-in-a-lifetime event, right? A once-in-a-lifetime happening. It, it's two hours. It's not a five, six-hour holiday parade. Is there a way that we can make this as special, as humanly possible, within the realm of possibilities? That's all I'm asking, so if you could go back and maybe take a look at that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and the meeting I had was to ask, because I had some conversations with several on the Little League Board who were at the meeting, and they, they understood about the police concern for safeties. And there was a lieutenant there. It was like, we can't do this, we can't do that. But as they thought about it, they, they did ask, would it be possible to have each kid in their own car? So we had that meeting to ask, and I said, Chief, I'll defer to your judgment when it comes to safety. So I think that's really the only wiggle room there. I think that the police wants to keep it shorter, so it's more maintained. But if there's going to be an ask, it would be to add a couple more cars, so every kid could have their own car, but.
So car over band and cheerleader? Is that, was it, if we had to prioritize it?
We can do whatever we want up here, but.
I, I know that the car thing was also an issue, right? They, they wanted one for each, and then you get one for the coaches. I get it.
Yeah, so one of Lieutenant Corkin's concern was really, if, if we did get a mad rush of people, for example, it would be easier for us, with the amount of resources that we have, to protect seven cars as opposed to fifteen, sixteen cars. And I understand that concern, right? We, we've already asked our neighboring agencies to send us resources. And so if all of a sudden we went to fifteen cars, you know, can we do it? I mean, we, we can do it. It's just now we've got to figure out who else we can tap for resources on that. And so I guess my question is, what, if, if in that meeting there was an agreement, but now there are other things that are essential that you as a council want to see, because this is a city event, I think it would be helpful to get that from you so that we can, we can make it happen tomorrow morning.
I'm okay with the band and the cheerleaders at the park. And if you can add a couple more cars, great. If you come back and say, we tried and we can't, then thank you for trying. But at the end of the day, I'm.
Unless, unless it's, unless it's something catastrophic, we're, we're going to, we're going to make it happen. I just, you know, if the direction is to, to work on that, I mean, we, we can, I can talk to Lieutenant Corkins. And unless it's something that he says, I cannot make it happen, then I will come back to you through the city manager. But, you know, we can, we can start working on it tomorrow morning.
To my colleagues, I mean, if I had to prioritize, I think it's way more important, if you can do it logistically, to have each boy in their own car than having a band there. The band can be there to greet them when they show up. And I mean, this is a really special occasion. And if we can avoid diluting it a little bit by having each kid in a car, I think that's really special. I don't know how you guys feel, but.
It's going to be on everyone's Christmas card.
Agreed.
Okay. Well, I mean, that, that's, as, as soon as this meeting's over, I'll talk to Lieutenant Corkin and see how we can make it happen with every, every player in, in their own car.
That'd be great. Thank you, Chief. I got one, one more. This is really for you, Chief, but it's more probably for Mrs. Man City. Struggling a little bit with the advertising component here, just because it feels like, you know, the city. I saw some numbers I'm not going to say yet, because they're, they're not, they're unofficial about how much benefit.
It's five square miles.
The city. Five most important square miles in Little League baseball.
Yes.
But no, we had, we got incredible economic benefit out of this, this really amazing accomplishment. And I'm struggling a little bit with asking for money. So I think if we're going to ask for money, I would hope, and we're going to spend this money regardless. If no sponsor came out, this council would say, do what you got to do to celebrate this amazing accomplishment. I think we all agree with that. Could we not take that money and just, instead of putting it right back into the general fund, put it aside for something rec and park related? I don't know if the Little League can even take the money, but just something that isn't just going to get, you know, obliterated by the, the mass of the general fund. But they could go back to the community, particularly youth sports, Little League, if they could take it. I don't know, but it just seems like we're kind of riding on their, you know, coattails a little bit for some dollars.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, I think that we'll have a directly applicable park expenditure coming up that this would go directly to. I mean, in two weeks, we're going to be talking about, directly about rec park and having to make funding decisions on how to deal with the soil and irrigation.
Right, and we, didn't we create, we have a reserve specifically for parks and recs?
Yes, we do.
So maybe we could allocate the money direct to that, because that would be paying for our, especially the field, the irrigation of the field.
Yeah, we could, I mean, I don't have any issue with that. It's policy direction. If you guys would like us to direct those sponsorships to the rec park renovation, if city manager and city attorney are okay with that. I don't have any concern.
As far as this evening, the, the critical issue, the reason they come in front of the council was the expenditure of the public funds. And one of the things I wanted to clarify, if, if, for instance, going from one car or two players per car to one per car, is that going to increase the amount of budget that you may need from this chief?
Chief, I'm assuming if we go to one car per child, we'd have to do, maybe do a little more security, that's what.
Budget, because we were talking a budget of seventy-five to a hundred thousand, do we need possibly more than that?
Yes, yeah, potentially. I'd have to talk to the lieutenant, but yes, definitely.
Mark, we could approve this without a finite dollar amount, couldn't we, if we just gave approval up to a certain number to the city manager?
Yes, so you want to, I mean, I don't know what that number is, a hundred and fifty? And I mean, I mean.
Yeah. It's probably something, once we get the actual expense, we can rectify it mid-year. Come back and.
Okay, so I'll move approval to up to two hundred thousand dollars. Hopefully it stays under a hundred and fifty thousand for the parade.
Mr. Mayor, before I second, may, may I just ask one question for rec and park? And that is in line with your question about advertising. Because this is sort of a generational event, I would ask that, you know, we don't make it the Tostitos Fiesta Bowl? That this is, you know, this isn't our opportunity to put El Segundo, El Segundo, El Segundo all over everything. And if, even if we have people who contribute a lot for sponsorships to make sure that we artfully display it. So again, it's not the Tostitos Fiesta Bowl, it's the Fiesta Bowl sort of thing.
Right, and just to kind of piggyback on that point and to the mayor's question, we've had a lot of people asking, what can we do? How can we help? How can we help? And I think that was staff's thought was, if we did sponsorships, that could be ways they could get involved and, and have their name. But again, tastefully, but yes, if the city's paying the bill, then we would be, we would be getting that recognition. And, and I agree with you, making it a good opportunity for the city. So we can do that. I think we can do both tastefully.
I just wanted to, to put that in there. That's not to submerge the virtue of Tostitos. They're wonderful.
Well, are you going to second it?
Any other?
I will second.
What do you know?
Resolution first.
Oh.
There actually is no resolution now.
You don't want a resolution now?
It's just a, it's just a budget.
Budget appropriation.
Okay, we have first to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then just real quick, one of the things I've asked Ally to look into for the long term is looking at, you know how we have the, the signs down Main Street, you know, the like pennants kind of things? That if we could get some made that say E S with blue and gold, and then we could use those for their homecoming parade or, you know, the, the opening day of, of baseball? Like, we can use them ongoing over the, over years, but that's one thing I've asked her to look into.
Happy to do that. Mm-hmm. Happy to do that.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mancini. I think we're done with this one then, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Exciting. That's this Sunday, twelve p.m., correct? Yes. All right, we are on to, I think we're on to Mr. Robinson. Let's see. Yep. City Treasurer Investment Portfolio Report for June twenty twenty-three. We have our elected official, City Treasurer Matt Robinson. Oh, shoot, I did. Sorry. Madam Clerk, anything to report this evening?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, not easy. Okay, so this is the second quarter. In general, not a ton of Treasury investment activity, aside from one relatively large Treasury transaction, transaction in Treasury securities, U.S. Treasuries. So here's the portfolio. Looks very much like we have been targeting over the last year. We've been building up to, you know, a portfolio that consists primarily of U.S. Treasuries with CDs and medium-term notes to a lesser degree. But those are kind of the three pillars, you could say, of our reserve portfolio. And we have a number of kind of more short-term liquidity cash instruments, LEAF being one of them, camp, and then just cash at the bank. And that is kind of, I think, one of the bigger points that I'll touch on a little bit later about how things have changed. So we've been continually stretching out the duration of the portfolio, buying longer-term bonds as opposed to shorter-term bonds. And you can see that through the time series here of both the percentage of the portfolio that's in more of our reserve portfolio, and then also the weighted average maturity has gone up to about over two and a half years. And that's to kind of take advantage of the fact, and our general belief, and the markets' generally belief, that rates are going down, and this is kind of a good time to stretch things out. So this is just another way of looking at the same thing. The goal here on this slide is to have all of these colors look similar across the different years. So you can see that we're pretty well spread out. And, you know, we, that's kind of one of the big aims that we have. The other thing is also within those years, it's not a bad idea to diversify across the different instruments that we have available. And once again, you can see that, you know, in general, these are pretty well spread out across the years, the different types of securities that we have. You know, more notably, you can see that we have a ten million dollar U.S. Treasury maturing in every year going out to twenty twenty-eight. One of the big events of the second quarter was we had our first ten million dollar U.S. Treasury mature at the end of that, and just in time for the POP payment, which was the intention. And then we went ahead and bought another ten million dollar U.S. Treasury to mature in twenty twenty-eight. You can see that this investments maturity date is going up from left to right, which is also by design, because we've been, again, buying longer dated, longer dated securities. These are all of the securities that you are welcome to pour through in your free time, that is probably not worth me going through. Here are the transactions, which are slightly more abbreviated, but a lot of CDs earlier in the year. And then you can see, and CDs have generally been the best investment for us, because they are guaranteed. They're, you could see them as even better than triple A, because they're FDIC insured. And then we have that the very bottom here on June thirtieth, the purchase of the, that Treasury note mentioned for ten million. And we got it at a discount. This is kind of where those transactions have been going, mainly two, three, four, and five-year from kind of time of purchase. This is a pie chart of the same thing, but this is actually the net transaction. So the U.S. Treasury is kind of net out on this, because we had one mature, and then we bought one. Interest received. We are now, as far as Q two, we received one point one million dollars in interest. So that number is starting to get big because of where rates are going. And that's generally what we're going to expect going forward based on our investments. So it's, it's nice to see. Compliance, we're compliant everywhere. We're only close in the CD department. We're up twenty-eight point seven three percent, and the max is thirty percent. So we can't buy too many more of those. Rating, everything's triple B or better, investment grade, no real problems here in terms of downgrades. If we had the city of El Segundo in here, you'd see an upgrade. LEAF, LEAF apportionment rates are going up. They're finally starting to catch up with raising rates, but not anywhere near, anywhere we want to be putting a large amount of our liquidity portfolio at the moment. City cash flows, you know, this is kind of the similar pattern that we've seen through time. We have a big outflow in June, and generally, the rest of the year is slowly building up cash and net credits. Historic drawdowns, you know, we haven't seen anything lower than fifteen million. And that's why we keep, you know, roughly fifteen million. It's our biggest twelve-month drawdown, fifteen million on hand in liquidity. Economic environment, Treasury curve is very inverted, and it has been inverted for quite some time. It's becoming, it has become less inverted since June, which is, you know, a slightly good sign. But most people, I think the one-year recession probability from economists who may or may not know what's going to happen is like sixty percent over the next year. But it's been that way for a little while. We, I think everyone was expecting recession by now, and we haven't had it. And I think the Fed is going to continue to kind of push rates slowly until they create a recession, just to, they're going to see how far they can, how hard they can fight against inflation before throwing the economy into recession. City rates are pretty high right now. They're actually, they've gone up since June. I think the five-year is about four point three right now. The one month is like five point five. So just kind of slow decline from five point five to four point four over those five years. And if this loads, so that, that, that looks particularly scary if you consider this to be an indicator of recession. That's about as, as bad as it's been since the early, the early eighties. But that has come back a little bit today. Unemployment continues to go down. And then this is kind of the realized inflation. So, or this is the predicted inflation. And that's what this, this five-year breakeven inflation prediction, it shows that, you know, at least the TIPS, which are Treasury Inflation Protected Securities, are indicating that the market thinks that the long-term, you know, five-year inflation number is going to be about two percent, which is what the Fed's been targeting. So now I think that's the end. But I actually didn't end up touching on, I guess, two of the big things that we've been doing over the last couple months. One of which is Cal Trust. We, one of our liquidity vehicles now is this medium-term fund, which is a floating NAV. You can kind of see it as a mutual fund, but it has a two and a half year duration. So it's kind of a good vehicle for us, because it's very liquid, and it can help us potentially take advantage of the fact that rates are high, and that rates are not likely to go much higher. So that's, we've put seven million into that, and that'll show up on the next report. And then the other big thing, we discussed this in IAC, was a, we added a new account at Chase that is a sweep account with money market. So we used to only get like forty-five basis points on cash at Chase, and so we'd have to manage that. And, you know, that's obviously not a good rate in today's environment. But we opened a, an account at Chase that essentially effectively lets us sweep our excess cash into a mutual fund, or a money market fund, sorry. And that yields in the high fours right now, four point seven five percent or something like that. So we're going to kind of dial in the movement in between accounts to make sure that we maximize the amount of money that's in that sweep account. Anything that we don't need, you know, for say tomorrow, will get swept into there, and therefore swept into a money market fund. And hopefully, over the long run, that'll make things, give us even more yield. But that is all for the quarter.
Any questions for Mr. Robinson?
No, but again, thank you. Thank you for just giving your expertise and knowledge and time to shepherd this whole thing. Your results are, they speak for themselves, but very impressive. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Good stuff. Thanks, man. All right, we're on to Councilmember Baldino report.
All right. First, I want to thank Sir Mark McCullough and Renfro for the Art Walk. A huge, John, thank you, a huge influx of people for the Art Walk, as every year, and just a fantastic event. So grateful for those two for putting that together, and for everyone who came out to make that a success. I owe my thanks and gratitude to Ally and the Parks and Rec Department and the city for helping with the watch parties for Little League. Such an exciting time in this city, and the way you responded positively, and even after putting on something as labor-intensive as the Art Walk, to turn around and do a watch party the next day was simply fantastic. So thank you and your staff for all the work on that.
Thank you.
I want to hope to see everyone at the parade.
Thank you. Councilmember Drew.
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Prustak.
Yes, I just wanted to give a quick update. So the Parks and Rec Subcommittee has been meeting regularly. We've gone over the latest plans for Phase One, and they, they've been blessed by the Parks and Rec Commission. And now it's going to the Planning Department, Planning Division, Planning Department, and it will be coming to us at the next meeting. But I just want to let everyone know that it's moving forward, and we're really focusing on the Phase One, which would encapsulate the teen center, the skate park, and then looking at changing some of the, looking at the irrigation, as well as looking at taking, redoing the, where the lawn bowling area is. So that's Phase One. But that's, so please be on the lookout for that, that is moving forward. Then secondly, I wanted to let everyone know that the Finance Committee has been meeting. And one of the things we've been talking about is, you know, the new business license tax going to effect on December, on December fir-, or at the beginning of the year. So we've asked the Finance Department to look at, is there any type of, do we need to reevaluate implementing, fully implementing that tax increase, especially given the landscape of the commercial property on the east side? So that's one thing that we're going to be looking at. So I just wanted to let people know that that's something that we as a city are, because we were concerned that the vacancy rate on the commercial property is creeping up to close to thirty percent, if not more. So we just, we're going to be looking at that. So I just want to keep everyone in the loop. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Prustak. Mayor Pretzam Pivensel.
We have the Regional Homelessness Task Force meeting tomorrow. And one of the items that we will discuss is, given the L.A. City Council cleaning up the wetlands, what that displacement means to us for people experiencing homelessness in, formerly in that area. Sanitation will kick back off next week, talking about the Regional Water Recycling Plan. That's that huge, you know, anywhere from three to five billion dollar project to recycle five hundred and fifty to five hundred and eighty million gallons of water a day throughout the sanitation districts. Transport comes back next week. Big, we'll have Metro presenting on the Green Line Extension. I think that's, Eliza, is that next week or two Mondays? Next Monday. And then the Local Travel Network, we will be planning the launch of the Local Travel Network. I know city manager working with COG on that as well. We will receive a briefing sometime in the next two weeks from Inglewood on their progress with getting their people mover, the train from SoFi out of there. They are working on their funding streams for that. That's a significant financial commitment. That's a billion-dollar project. One of the key pieces on that will be they are attempting to make that eligible for funding from express lanes, as was good on the one oh five, the way the one oh five and the one ten, where they have those express lines that you pay to ride, then if you are within three miles of that corridor, you can apply for funding if it's a traffic offset. So they're trying to make that eligible for that. And any conceivable express lanes on the one four oh five, that will be pandemonium, and I hope to be sick that day. And then League of Cities comes up, Carol, I think, I think Councilmember Prustak, you'll be voted there. I think the city is probably going to duck a position on that taxpayer protection referendum, which is a bit sticky. It effectively defy, it removes some discretionary taxes from cities. And it's kind of at the expense of small cities. I guess we're at large, it's the expense of small cities, because big cities kind of abuse their taxing authority is the reasoning behind the referendum. I think the way that our city historically sits, we kind of see both sides of it. We're not an abusive party to it, so it doesn't really make sense to us. But I think we're going to stay out of that battle. And that's all for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I know the Business Committee is spending a lot of money on that referendum. Let's see, Rena Reform comes up Thursday, so more discussion at Southern Cal Association of Governments. This will be the second and third committee meeting with different groups on this. This is about the regional housing allocation that we get in the city of El Segundo, and that all cities in the state of California get. SCAG's been tasked with making recommendations to reform the overall methodology. So we've now sat through several hearings of that, and it's moving forward. So I'll keep you guys posted. I think you sent, I sent you one email already. Mayor Pretzam and I, I think that was that within the last couple of weeks, you went to Silicon Valley?
We were still in the regionals.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, so.
It's all Little League time.
It's all a blur, but yeah.
But we were in the loser's bracket, so it was within the last few weeks.
Yeah, we were, Chris had the game up wherever we were at this event. But we were in Silicon Valley, Menlo Park, pitching El Segundo to a group of probably fifty venture capitalists. And we were very well received. And there was a dinner afterwards where I got to meet some of these people. And several have already reached out to set up visits in El Segundo. So that's very encouraging. We have, I've got the Contract Cities meeting over the weekend in San Diego, because I'm on the executive committee. And it's unfortunately the first meeting I've made, so I'll be there for that. And I'll keep you guys apprised of what I learned from that. And it was absolutely incredible. I mean, Lance, you said once in a lifetime. Hopefully, it's not, but it certainly felt like it to me to go to Williamsport and see that game. And you meet some of the families. I know half the families will see them at a watering hole before the game, walk to the game, go to the game, have that low, when that grand slam was hit, and an absolute high minutes later was just phenomenal. And then to just get back in an airplane the next morning was amazing. It was a great experience. I'll never forget it. And thank you also going to Little League, and thank you to the city, like Mr. Baldino said. You guys have been very busy the last couple weeks.
I forgot about the library.
Yeah, please.
I'm sorry, I forgot about the library, and congratulating the library on their new card. And it's the, was the celebration of the seventy-fifth anniversary. Unfortunately, it was the same time as the last game. So it was a, I think I was the only one that went. It was, but it was very lovely, and congratulations on, you know, seventy-five years and introducing a new card.
Yeah. And for the record, Chris and I were at a basketball clinic in the morning, the high school game at twelve, and Art Walk, but we were bummed. We missed that one. City Manager, any reports?
I have nothing else, Mayor. Thank you.
City Attorney.
Nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Wow, great. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Oh, great, okay. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.